Are you ready to go? Rowdy, is this, I know, is this on YouTube? This is, we got a YouTube channel, right? Okay, okay. Okay. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called Order. So we have one item. First, I should ask, any declarations of conflict of interest? I know, Councilor Dron, are you online?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Councilors McCabe, Councilor McCabe and Deputy Mayor Yankov could not be present, so we have eight in the chamber. So, number three. Well, I'll repeat, any declarations of conflict of interest? None. Approval of agenda, there's one item. Presentation resolutions, presentation of the City of Charlottetown, 24, 25 capital and operational budgets and associated resolutions. Moved by Councilor Ramsey, second by Councilor McKinnon. All those in favor? Councilor Dron?
In favor.
Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilor John McLeer, who is the Chair of Standing Committee for Finance and Administration, and he has some remarks to make about the budget. And our CAO Eleanor will follow with the resolutions. Councilor, Councilor McLeer.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and fellow councilors, city senior leadership and staff, and to everyone who has joined us today in person and online. It's my pleasure as Chair of the Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee to present the 2024-2025 budget for the City of Charlottetown. Your Worship, the balanced capital and operational budgets before you present a solid financial plan for Charlottetown. One that touches all services and programs with a focus on growth, yet maintains careful and planned spending. But before I speak to the investments we're making, I'd like to take a moment to talk about how we got here. This year's budget process has been a little bit different to any other we've gone through. It's been the most transparent one we've engaged in as a city. Every meeting was held in an open session and livestreamed to our YouTube channel. Every debate, every question, every priority was brought to the forefront for public consumption. Taxpayers following us on YouTube watched a realistic approach to planning the next fiscal year, live and as it happened. I'd like to recognize Eleanor Mohammed, our Chief Administrative Officer, and Betty French, our Finance Manager, who started work on this budget along with the department heads and their respective staff and the worker bees way back in the fall of 2023. Part of that work included two days of budget workshops, which were open to the public and livestreamed. Members of council along with senior city staff met to identify a strategic direction and set clear priorities for the upcoming budget. We also used that opportunity to hear from some of our community partners. We were fortunate to have the community survey results to provide an in-depth review of what our community priorities combined with what we heard through conversations with residents. We were prepared for the weeks of discussions and reviews that budgets always bring. Of course, Dan Jenkins, our new Chief Financial Officer, joined us in January as the process was really gaining momentum. And he jumped headfirst into refining and streamlining the process. This resulted in some new budget procedures incorporating the impacts of forecasts and global economic trends on the planned projects and initiatives we can realistically complete during the fiscal year. As we look ahead, we can't escape the fact that Charlottetown continues to grow. We're excited for the opportunities growth brings, but mindful of the investment required to maintain, update, and build new infrastructure, to improve our facilities, and to increase services. We know this budget had to reflect the community's focus on increasing their feelings of safety. And so policing features prominently. It also contains a small increase in water and sewer charges to help maintain our infrastructure and defray rising operational costs. As you look through this budget book, I'm confident that you'll see an appropriate balance in addressing urgent capital and operational needs. That balance is the result of months of hard work. The figures tell the story of a strategic approach to prioritizing projects and initiatives to be prudent and responsible while enabling ongoing investments to continue sustainably preparing for the growth of our city and maintaining the excellent quality of life residents to serve. Now, what you've been waiting for, some numbers. Council approved $55.2 million for the net city and capital expenses, city and utility capital expenses. This money will fund different types of new infrastructure costs across our city, and I'll explain more of that in a moment. We're also investing $102,234,000 as total city and utility operating expenditures to fund the people who keep our city operating and the infrastructure we currently have in place. Altogether, the City of Charlottetown and the water and sewer utility will have a projected $157,479,000 spend for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. Some of the highlights I'd like to point out for you include significant investment in our protective and emergency services. In addition to the six full-time police officers we approved earlier this year, Charlottetown Police Services now have funding to hire another five officers and invest in a mobile critical incident command to make sure our police are better prepared for any and all incidents. Charlottetown Fire Department will be supported by two new supervisors and will upgrade their equipment, including a new FASC rescue craft to improve their water rescue capabilities and help our residents feel safe in all of their activities on land and on the water. Our firefighters will also be protected by new self-contained oxygen tanks to help them breathe while fighting fires. When considering emergency measures, operation responsibilities, council also looked to the future of all residents when we approved investing in generators and other pieces of equipment to be dedicated to specific reception centers. Should we be hit with another emergency like Fiona, we'll be better prepared to appropriately welcome and care for our residents. Another of our priorities is to effectively manage the growth of our beautiful city. Part of that is through maintaining and building new streets and sidewalks and active transportation pathways to lead the way for predicted development. The Eastern Gateway Project is underway, and we've already begun improving the stormwater drainage along Water Street and this joint project with the province. We'll also be changing the route people take to enter our city and making it a bit more efficient. Another part of managing growth is improving our public transit system. We'll be going to tender later this year to start the design build of a new transit depot with three maintenance bays and 19 storage and charging bays to house the new electric buses we'll be riding over the coming years. While we grow, we want to maintain that community feeling we all love. And so we want to continue to connect people. Let them choose their best mode of transportation. And let's not forget the lifestyle we're so lucky to have in Charlottetown. We're continuing to invest in the new Simmons Multi-Sport and Recreation Center, and pretty much everyone I know is excited for this state-of-the-art facility and the healthy, active living opportunities it's going to bring us all. Don't forget the events our city is becoming world famous for hosting. Two new events that we're really happy to support will happen later this fall. At the beginning of October, we'll host the Hearing Life Tour Challenge as part of the Grand Slam of Curling for the first time. Wow. This event will bring 64 teams of world-class curlers to our city to play in the Bell Alliance Center. And at the end of October, we'll host the Spoh Ho X Experience, where we're not just investing in the event, but also in the future of Charlottetown as an event destination. The Spoh Ho Experience is for sport hosting industry professionals, and we'll be welcoming them all to see what we have to offer. I'm confident we'll be welcoming many of them back. For the past several weeks, council has been faced with difficult decision-making. I sincerely thank all members of council for their thoughtful deliberation and debate and the slug through our meetings and their dedication to finalizing this budget. Thank you. I also thank senior leadership and all staff for their work and advice in the budget preparation process. Your information, input, and expertise helped guide council's discussions and was invaluable to the process. These budgets present a sound financial plan for our city, ensuring our residents have the services and programs they need and deserve, maintaining our strong financial position, and keeping us on the path of sustained and strategic growth. It's a budget that's right for Charlottetown, and I'm optimistic for the year ahead and everything we plan to achieve. And before I go to the adoption of this, I'd like to make a special note to Janice Fogarty Full Disclosure, who are comms senior communications officer, who helped craft and prepare me and present in the presentation of this budget. Thank you. Your Worship, I move the adoption of the City of Charlottetown's 2024-2025 financial plan.
Thank you, Councilor John McLeer. Moved by Councilor McLeer, do I have a seconder? Councilor Matarde. So the resolution's on the floor to adopt. You have the resolution? Okay, well, she can read it aloud. Okay. You want to read that first one? Please.
Thank you, Worship. Moved by Councilor McLeer, seconded by Councilor Beck. Be it resolved that the 2024-2025 City of Charlottetown Operational Budget as presented by Councilor John McLeer, Chair of Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee, be approved, and that the 2024-2025 Charlottetown Water and Sewer Corporation Operational Budget as presented by Councilor John McLeer, Chair of Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee, be approved.
Question's called? No, just one second. Councilor McLeer. Councilor McLeer, do you want to take a seat? And be part of the discussion? Councilor Twill?
Thank you. I want to thank the Chair of Planning, or Chair of Finance for bringing in today's budget. All during the process, I asked myself some fundamental questions with respect to this budget. Is this budget fair and equal to the neighborhoods and communities across this city? Is the work in progress continuing on so that people in the respective neighborhoods and communities across the City of Charlottetown can actually see their tax dollars working for them? Besides that, I looked at the process itself. When we looked at the so-called new initiatives, reference was made to the KPMG report. And in our first meeting, it was discovered that the KPMG report was not adopted, approved, or even received by city council. So I'm not sure why we cherry picked the KPMG report. Capital projects. As the Chair mentioned, and you're right, this was the first time that meetings were held in a public forum. So transparency, I think, is indispensable to gaining the public's confidence so they can watch the deliberations and the discussions that do take place here in the city council chambers. But when it came time to hacking and slashing the capital projects, from a senior management perspective, those meetings were held behind closed doors. So the question is, why? Why were those meetings held behind closed doors and then thrown at us so we got to fight it out over the scraps? Why weren't those meetings held in an open forum? It's taxpayers' dollars. The residents have a right to see what projects are being rejected by senior management and the managers of each one of these departments. Why weren't those meetings held in a public forum? And what's the rationale for cutting these particular projects? So I see some inconsistencies when it comes to being open and transparent. When we were going through the capital projects, for example, police, guns and gangs, Chief of Police referenced that, I asked some questions. I wanted to get into some of the concerns that I had. I was cut off. No, we can't discuss that, even though it was a line item in the budget that the Chief of Police presented to this council. Again, I go back to equality and fairness, and something that's near and dear to my heart are recreational facilities. So each neighborhood, each community, each ward can look out and say, all right, we didn't get our facility this year, whether it's the outdoor rinks, that has been prevalent in the suburban communities, and next year could be our turn. But this year, in our Parks and Recreation budget, the committee submitted to manager recommend that they be cut and slashed. I'm sorry, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with it. And you talk about infrastructure, street paving, sidewalks. When the projects were recommended by management initially, there were no projects. There was no money allotted. Council had to fight it out to bring and put it back into the budget. So, again, I ask the question, is this budget truly reflective and fair to all other neighborhoods and communities across this city? I don't believe it is. So, again, I want to thank you for bringing down the budget. I know it's been a struggle. You said earlier, you talked about, you know, this is a transitional budget. I see disparity. I see discrepancy, and I see unfairness. And I don't believe that is too much to ask. I really don't. That's what we're elected for. We're elected to represent our constituents, to bring their recommendations to the table so that they can say and look right across the board, you know what? Progress is being made across the board. And in this particular budget, I submit to the citizens of this community, I don't believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McLeer, I would just like to add what you stated. I want to give a huge thank you to staff, departmental managers, and our upper management for their input and feedback on Budget 2024-25. The process began, as you said, back in November 2023, and furthermore, a big shout-out to council members for their engagement during lively discussions and debates that were livestreamed for the first time on our YouTube channel. Now, just one thing to keep in mind, all the pertinent documents presented are available to the public. So quite frankly, I believe we conducted these discussions in a professional and respectful manner, and I applaud all of you for that. And in closing, I want to warn you to stay tuned for more to come. Happy Easter. Joyous luck. Okay. Councilor McLeer, do you want to respond, or do you want to?
No, I mean, Councilor Twill, I mean, he shared his comments and advice. He's always good at doing that. So, you know, as for the process, I'll defer maybe to CAO on her as it relates to, I guess, the process and how the staff. I mean, they have to do the work. We have to trust that the staff are identifying in the budgeting process, be it on the operation or capital side, what the needs, you know, what the needs are. And then, you know, they come as recommendations to, you know, to us and through the committee and then ultimately to council. And, you know, it's, you know, I don't know if it's a process that can ever be perfect, but can it be improved? Yeah, there's always room for improvement. If there's not, there must be doing something wrong, but that's all I got to say. Thanks.
CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
Thank you, Worship. So I'd like to remind elected members here today that in this chambers and outside of this chambers, you adhere to a Code of Conduct bylaw. And most specifically, in the commentary that was just made, two sections of that bylaw are relevant. First is 20.2. Members of council must not make public statements attacking or reflecting negatively on the City of Charlottetown, other members, city staff, or invoke staff matters for political purposes. The second one is 22.2. Members of council shall be respectful of the staff's role to advise based on political neutrality and objectivity without undue influence from any individual member or faction of the council. Our role as administration is to advise council and make recommendations. The administration of this municipality has done exactly that. We had to make decisions for cuts to budget. Those cuts were brought before council to be publicly debated. It was within proper governance, transparency, and with accountability. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Question was called? Question was called. All those in favor? All those in favor of Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor McLeir, seconded by Councilor Beck, please raise your hand. Okay. Councilors Beck, McKinnon, Matarde, Ramsey, McLeir, and Bernard. Councilor Dron, yea or nay?
Not in favor.
In favor?
Not.
Not in favor, okay. Councilors against, please raise your hand. Councilor Twill and Councilor Dron. And just make note that both the Council McCabe and Deputy Mayor Yankop are not present. Okay. Resolution Number Two.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Councilor McLeir, seconded by Councilor Beck. Be it resolved that a municipal tax rate of $0.67 per $100 of assessment be levied against all non-commercial property in the City of Charlottetown for a period of January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2024, as per the provisions of the Real Property Act. Save and accept: (1) the non-commercial component of property, which is owned by non-resident person or non-resident corporation, where the municipal tax rate shall be $1.33 per $100 of assessment; (2) the non-commercial component of hotels and motels, where the municipal tax rate shall be $1.91 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; (3) $1.57 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation; (4) the non-commercial component of apartment buildings containing four or more units, where the municipal tax rate shall be (a) $0.91 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; (b) $1.57 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation; (4) the non-commercial component of properties located in the Parkwood Estates and Riverview Estates Mobile Home Parks, where the municipal tax rate shall be (a) $0.42 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; (b) $1.08 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation. For the purposes of this resolution, non-resident person and non-resident corporation applies to property owners as described in Section 24 of the Real Property Tax Act Regulation. Therefore, be it resolved that a municipal tax rate of $2.36 per $100 of assessment be levied against all commercial property located in the City of Charlottetown for a period of January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2024, as per the provisions of the Real Property Tax Act. And be it further resolved that the City of Charlottetown requests the Province of PEI to collect an additional $0.18 per $100 of assessment on all commercial properties within the Business Improvement Area as per the attached map for the period of January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2024. The monies collected from this shall be transferred to the Downtown Charlottetown Incorporated for the purpose of marketing and enhancing the downtown core of the City of Charlottetown.
Okay. Moved by Councilor McLeir. Councilor McLeir, seconded by Councilor Beck. Question? Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Councilors Beck, McKinnon, I have to put this on the public record. Councilor Matarde, Ramsey, McLeir, and Bernard, in favor, against? Councilor Dron, yea or nay?
Not in favor.
Not in favor? Okay. Six to two. Do you have the next one there?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Councilor McLeir, seconded by Councilor Beck. Be it resolved that the Charlottetown Water and Sewer Corporation, water sewer and combined water and sewer rates and fees effective April 1st, 2024, as detailed on the attached rate schedule, be approved.
Can I speak to this, your honor? Mayor Brown?
Councilor Dron, can you hear me? Councilor Dron, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You want to speak to it?
You hear me?
Do you want to speak to it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. You know, as Chair of Water and Sewer, you know, I know we talked about a slight increase. I know when we came to budget time, I didn't want to put an increase on for the water and sewer. You know, it was turned down. Council wanted to put it in there for infrastructure. So I don't know. If this increase, is all of this going to infrastructure? Is that my, you know, is it a recommendation that all the increase is going strictly into infrastructure? Can someone answer that for me?
Okay. We do have Josh McGinnis here. Do we have the manager? He's not in town? Okay. Josh, are you able to provide some enlightenment? Councilor Dron. Josh McGinnis is going to answer the question. He's the Assistant Manager?
Sure. Yeah.
Any other question? Because it's two questions. Do you have anything else to add to that? Or is that all you want to ask?
No, that's.
That's good.
I just want clarification on that. During the budget release, it was said that, you know, we're increasing the rate so the money could go to infrastructure. So I just want a clarification on that. Is it just all going strictly to infrastructure?
Mr. Josh McGinnis.
Thank you. So the main component is towards infrastructure, but there will be an element of that that is assisting with the increasing cost of operation.
Did you hear that, Councilor Dron?
Yes, I did, Mayor Brown, and I appreciate that. I just know that we have a surplus this year, and I was against this. So I thank Josh for his explanation, but I can't support this. But thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. Thank you very much. Give Richard our regards. Okay. Question? Thank you, Councilor Ramsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councilors Beck, McKinnon, Matarde, Ramsey, McLeir, and Bernard. Councilors against? Councilor Twill, Councilor Dron, yea or nay?
Against. Thank you. Nay?
Okay, thank you. Do you have another resolution there?
Moved by Councilor McLeir, seconded by Councilor Beck. Be it resolved that the 2024-2025 City of Charlottetown capital budget, as presented by Councilor John McLeir, Chair of Finance, Audit, Tendering, and Administration Committee, be approved, and that the 2024-2025 Charlottetown Water and Sewer Corporation capital budget, as presented by Councilor John McLeir, Chair of Finance, Audit, Tendering, and Administration Committee, be approved. And further, that staff be authorized to tender projects and long-term debt associated with the capital expenditure program.
Okay. Councilor Twill's got his. Oh, Councilor Twill, could you please stand up? Thank you.
Thank you. Question for the CAO. There was much discussion here with regards to the six police officers that were committed by the provincial government to effectively provide safety and security for the residents down on Park Street, Beach Street, and the surrounding community. I made several recommendations for a memorandum of understanding for the commitment, financial commitment on behalf of the provincial government. Can you please tell the community? Has that commitment been made financially? And do we have that in writing?
Councilor Twill. This, I believe, is for the capital budget. Correct? No, I just, is, Dan? Is this the resolution for capital? This is to buy goods, to build infrastructure? The operational deal is with the police officers. So that's where it should have been asked. That's, and no, no, but this. I know, but.
This is a simple question.
I know, but.
All the CAO have to do is.
No, we didn't get the chief to answer, but I'm just trying to clarify that we have two budgets. This is the first time when we have had operational and capital come together. In the past, we did them separately. This time around, we met back in November, 23rd and 24th, and we knew the direction we were going in. So I would say that the chief or the CAO can respond to you at a later date. Right now?
Can I answer the question now?
Not now, because it's capital budget.
That's really unfortunate, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So the question is related to capital budget. Is a question called?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. In the capital budget process, we had put money aside for a potential capital project with the Confederation Center, which may or not have happened. Is that in the capital budget as a line item in case we decide to go a certain way? I know we didn't discuss it, you know, but I'm just wondering about the capital budget. Concerns came up when we were doing the capital budget that we found other years, previous years, there were items not accounted for. So, you know, which was a surprise to me. I'm just wondering, are we going to look at the previous capital projects or the projects that weren't looked at or completed in the last few years? Or are we just going on with a new budget and just looking at the new items? So that's what I, I know we never decided on grants yet. So is that an item that we have a certain amount in the budget? And then we'll determine what the grants are after that? Can someone clarify that, please?
So is that the totality of your question? Anything else you want to add to that?
No, that's great. Thank you.
So just as for the grants, you as a member at large on the Standing Committee for Finance and Administration, that will come up after, we'll discuss that at our Standing Committee meeting and then make those recommendations to council on grants and the agreements. So that's forth, that'll be coming up, I believe, at the next Standing Committee meeting. Councilor McLeir, can you add to that or also address his question regarding the capital budget regarding some of the issues he's brought to the floor?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Well, just concur what you said on the grant process, and that's how it'll be handed. As for Councilor Dron's clarity on the Confederation piece, I think I'll defer that to our CFO, Dan Jenkins, if you would. Thank you.
So Councilor Dron, Dan Jenkins, the Director of Finance Administration, is going to address it.
Thank you.
Yes, your worship, through to Councilor Dron. So there was an amount included in the capital budget for the Confederation Center project. There was no discussion at council in terms of the detail of that project because it is very much a concept that needs to be flushed out with the Board of Management at the Confederation Center before we have really anything to discuss. But it does relate to their request for funding for their capital project to redevelop the library premises. And the initial ask was, there were some challenges with that. So in consultation with the Chief Financial Officer at the Confederation Center, we have explored some other possibilities. And we'll be taking that back to council for full discussion and deliberation when we have some more details. So no decision made on it, but there wasn't an allocation made in the budget. But there would be no spend on that until it came to council for full discussion and decision.
And Councilor Dron, you recall that I did mention that it involves negotiations that would fall under Section 119, subsection, I don't know if it's 1H, but Dan might be able to find it. That will go into a closed session. And then if that materializes into something, we'll see a path forward. Any clarification required?
Well, yeah. I just didn't know if that was going to be included in the budget as an item that, you know, do we have to come back and expand the budget? Or is that a line item in it? You know, it's the same as the grants. Are we going with a certain level of grant? Like, let's just say $10. And then we have that in the budget, and we're not to go over that? Is that my understanding?
Okay. I'm going to get Dan to just clarify that. But I think you already sent out, or where's Betty? I think Betty already sent out a template on what's being proposed. But those proposals will be flushed out at our next Standing Committee meeting for Finance Administration. Dan, do you want to add, or Betty?
Certainly, yes. I, your worship, through to Councilor Dron, I concur that that in fact is the case and that the deliberations on the grants would happen at the next meeting or a meeting in the near future. The other point, the other question I neglected to answer for Councilor Dron was the projects that haven't been moved forward in this fiscal year. No, certainly those are still under consideration. But what we have included in this year's budget are the projects that we believe that can be completed or at least initiated, and the money spent this year. So we didn't want to overstate what we felt we could accomplish this year. If we look back at the 23-24 capital budget, it was a very ambitious budget. And we were only able to accomplish about 30% of the projects that we set out to complete. So the, those projects are, still have great merit and will continue to be discussed and hopefully move forward in the future as council determines those priorities.
Councilor Dron?
Well, thank you. And thanks for that clarification, Danny. It just, you know, I know we're here trying to approve a budget. And I know there's a lot of work by all council and staff did a great job trying to do their best. But it just, this one kind of gets me again is, you know, we passed a budget last year. As you stated, 30% was looked at. And now there's 70% that's just kind of vanished, that we have no real appetite to go back and do that. We're on to a new year and a new budget. It's been a learning curve for me myself because I just thought last year we passed the budget, and then that was going to be done. Those projects were going to be looked at. So sitting here, coming back up to this budget process and finding them that they weren't concluded, it was kind of a shock to me. So, you know, I know we have a whole new administration in here, and we're trying to do a good job. It's just, you know, it was shocking at that time. And, you know, I just hope that we can go forward, that if we put it in a budget, those items which we pass, they're going to be looked at before any other ones. But I, you know, I'm not going to go on about it. I appreciate the time, Mayor Brown, and the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Twill, you have a question? Got a budget?
Just a question for Danny. You talked about the capital projects and having them completed. If the capital projects would have been submitted to the public back in January, you think there would have been much more of an opportunity to have a number of these projects than the ones that didn't make the grade? Have these projects completed? Like, that was the norm the last few years, completed? Like, that was the norm the last few years, to have these projects submitted much earlier than, you know, towards the end of, towards the end of, the end of March. Now, we're competing with the provincial government. A lot of their, a lot of their capital projects and requests for proposals and tendering processes are already in play, and we're behind the eight ball. So, you know, that was another major concern that I had, was delaying the capital projects to March. And I question the motivation for that, as opposed to, you know, committees, standing committees submitted their capital projects to the Finance Committee, and then, for some reason, you know, week after week after week went by, there's no discussions, there's no deliberations, and then, you know, we're forced into a squeeze play. And I question that. I really do. We were on a train of thought that, you know, our capital projects would be submitted out the door for better pricing in, in January. So I'm looking, Counselor Duran, you know, a lot of these projects didn't make the grade, even with record and growth development in this city. I mean, it just amazes me. The picture that was painted, as I said earlier, you know, doom and gloom, yet we have record, growth, and development in this city. It doesn't add up. It really doesn't.
Counselor McLeer, do you want to just defer that to Dan, or?
Yeah, Dan, if you, if you would, I know it's pretty clear, you know, in your head and part of the process that you've been steering us on. Perhaps if you could maybe just context that budgeting piece, the gap piece, and just to kind of put that in perspective, and it may, it may shed some, I guess, context for what Counselor Twill is, I guess, how he's presenting it, and maybe it might make it more clear to certainly those that are listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McLeer. Through, your worship, to Counselor Twill. So, yes, certainly the gap between, you know, what we had hoped to spend on capital projects and what we were able to do because of capacity issues or the ability to find contractors, that kind of thing, has been, has been a challenge. And really, we wanted to be more clear in terms of what management felt in consultation with their staff and contractors and so on could actually be completed or delivered on. In terms of the timing of getting capital projects approved, I agree with you. It's beneficial in terms of contractors planning and pricing contracts to get those out as soon as they can, as soon as we can, so that we're not last minute and all the capacity's booked up. It is the wish of the administration to look at capital projects as an ongoing, continuous process of looking at projects, evaluating them, approving the projects, and then looking into, you know, the year we're in, the next year, and the next year, to look at when the optimal time to pull the trigger on those projects is. So the hope would be that the Confederation Center project would be, would be an example where we may be able to revisit that in the middle of the fiscal year, depending on, you know, the value of the project and the proposal. And there may be, you know, there may not be trade-offs involved, but there may be trade-offs involved as well. So it would be our preference to, you know, to have the capital budgeting and capital project discussion ongoing, as opposed to just a snippet in time coming towards the end of the fiscal year. So we certainly hear your point and agree that it would be beneficial to get those approved and planned well in advance of construction season.
Counselor Twill, duly noted, because I had some concerns, so did some other counselors. So we'll be doing a quick review after this budget about how we proceed in the future on capital budgets. But I can give the Director of Finance Administration credit that he's now looking at how to debt service our capital debt. I don't think we always took that into consideration in past budgets. So this is a good path forward, that we know how much we have to set aside to debt service any debt that we incur. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Duran, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Twill, yea or nay? Okay. Counselors Beck, McKinnon, Bernard, McLeer, Ramsey, and Matert in favor. Six to. Do we have another? Any more resolutions? That's it? Well, we're going to adjourn shortly, but I do want to wish you all a happy Easter. Onzian français, joyeux Pauvre. Vous et vos familles. Happy Easter to you and your family. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. All those in favor?